Councilmember Barosa de Padilla, would you please do this in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, council is grateful to have Pastor NDBC, Associate Pastor at Ephesus Seventh Day of Venice Church to pray with us. Pastor, welcome to council. Thank you for being here.
Counselors, I count it as an honor to be here with you all this evening. Will you all join me in prayer? Lord, we are grateful for the opportunity to gather in this place knowing that your presence precedes us. Holy writ reminds us that you are the wellspring of wisdom. You are both source and sustainer of knowledge and understanding. So this evening, we're asking that we would meet with you in a place where you can minister to us in such a way that we can effectively minister to those who you have called us to serve. We ask God that you would bathe this room with your spirit, that kindness would flow, that we would have direction and utterance that would seek to serve those who cannot serve themselves. Open our eyes to the places where we would miss on our own and allow us to see you working in each and every area that you direct our focus and attention to. Lord, in this moment, we pause a little longer to pray, not just for our local counselors, not just for our local servants, God, but for our president, our congressmen and women, for all those who are in service to our country. We ask that you would teach us to have hearts like you, that we would be able to minister in places, God, that we can be direct and present images of what you desire your world and your people to look like. Touch each and every broken heart, heal every hurting individual. And I pray for those who are in the room tonight, who are directly responsible for the business of this city, that you would give guidance and utterance, that your work would be done. I pray that each and every family represented here would not suffer lack in that their family members are here toiling tirelessly, but that you would continue to visit them where they are, that they might be at peace even as we are here. We thank you for this moment. We acknowledge your presence. We ask that you would, even as we conclude this business and separate from each other, not allow us the opportunity to separate ourselves from your presence. In Jesus' name we do pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor, Reemy, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Can I get a motion dispensed with the reading of the journal? Is there a second? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Thank you. Are there any additions or corrections to the journal? Hearing none, the journal is approved. This week's communications received by the city clerk's office are listed on the agenda and will be published in the city bulletin. Are there any other communications to be read into the record?
Not at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will go around the horn and then we'll end. Councilmember Bangston.
Thank you, Council President. I have one announcement and one resolution this evening. Announcement on February 28th at 4:00 p.m. here in council chambers, my office will hold a public hearing to consider amendments to the contracts establishing and governing the Madison Township Joint Economic Development District and the Northern Pickaway County Joint Economic Development District. The public hearing will give folks the opportunity to comment and provide recommendations on the amendments that are being proposed. Those interested in reading the amendment prior to the hearing may reach out to the city clerk's office to acquire a copy. Any resident seeking to submit written testimony should forward it to my office by 12:00 p.m. on the day of the hearing by email to my legislative aide, JP Dorval, at J B as in boy, dorval, D O R V A L, at columbus.gov. Residents who want to provide in-person testimony during the hearing must also email JP Dorval in my office at JB Dorval at columbus.gov by 12:00 p.m. on the day of the hearing. Each speaker's remarks will be limited to three minutes or less. We look forward to that discussion on February 28th. Also, tonight I have Resolution 0027X-2023, which I'm excited to introduce. And I'm going to ask President Nana Watson of the NAACP to come up at this time. This resolution is to announce a new process for the identification of minority vendor contract participation. This resolution, which is accompanied by a memorandum that was sent out to city staff earlier today, came about through several conversations my office and the council president's offices had with community partners this past year. Starting Monday, February 20th, 2023, all legislation drafters must begin identifying all legislation that contains city contracts with minority vendor participation by either a prime contractor, subcontractor, or both. Through this process, members of the public will be able to see ordinances on the council agenda that contain city contracts and minority vendor participation, improving the invisibility of our minority vendor procurement efforts. Anyone seeking details other than the fact that there is a minority vendor participation in a contract can find additional details in the background of the legislation or can contact the relevant department for more information. And really, this is to hold ourselves accountable to the work that we say as a city that we are dedicated to doing. And a great champion of this work, who has been fierce advocate of this for years, is Ms. Nana Watson, the president of our Columbus in NAACP. So I wanted to present her with the resolution and also opportunity to give some remarks. Madam President.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Council President Harden, Pro Tem Dorans, and members of council. Councilwoman Bangston, the Columbus unit of the NAACP salutes you for progressively moving forward this new process for the identification of minority vendor contract participation. We believe this initiative will assist our city in ensuring that all have the right to participate in the city's process for equity. This is another example of unified collaboration between the NAACP and the city of Columbus. I also want to take this opportunity, if you will allow me, to congratulate Jason Jenkins on being named the Executive Director of the Office of Diversity and Inclusion. We believe that his leadership will vigilantly monitor and enforce DEI to ensure that all departments embrace and value diversity and inclusion. Director Jenkins, please know that your NAACP stands with you as you take this journey again to council. Thank you for allowing the NAACP to be your partner in our crusade for achieving diversity, equity, and inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Nana. Don't walk away too quickly. I got to make sure I get you to the resolution. I want to make sure I open it up to my colleagues for any comment, but I also want to echo my thanks to our Director of the Office of Diversity and Inclusion, Jason Jenkins. He's hit the ground running, him and his team. And when we brought this up, this was a priority for him in just his first 30 days. And so I want to thank him for his leadership. Also want to thank Madam Clerk, Clerk Blevins, and your entire team for working with us. These system changes take a lot of people. And so I want to thank everyone on council as well for their efforts. Any comments from any of my colleagues? All right. Well, seeing none, I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Thank you so much.
And that is all I have this evening, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barosa de Padilla.
Thanks, Council President. I have one resolution today. And as I'm speaking, we got our crew moving up to the podium. I'm excited to introduce Resolution 0024X-2023 to celebrate the Central Ohio Transit Authority, or COTA, and declare February 7, 2023, as Columbus Loves COTA Day. Since 1971, the Central Ohio Transit Authority, commonly known as COTA, has been serving the people in our community with millions of trips each year. They serve a vital role in our community by offering riders a convenient way to access their day-to-day needs. They have helped residents get to work, school businesses, recreation spaces, et cetera. COTA has been one of the many ways to ensure mobility around the city of Columbus is convenient to all, and it is important to celebrate them because transportation moves people. In addition to Columbus Loves COTA Day, it's Happy Ohio Loves Transit Week. Every segment of Ohio, businesses, community, individuals, and families benefit from public transportation, an essential service that impacts economic development, ensures sustainable lifestyles, and offers a higher quality of life. Transit agencies are essential in keeping our communities moving. Whether it's taking riders to the grocery store, providing a ride to medical appointments, or ensuring riders get to school or work, local transit agencies are the lifeline of Ohio communities. Every day, we should love COTA and all the people who work for them. And every day, we should love transit. We need to move from being a car-centric city to being people-centric that provides mobility that is equitable and affordable. Better and efficient public transit moves more people, and well-designed infrastructure keeps people safe. I also want to thank you, because I often tell the story, my mother has never driven a day in her life. She's 83 years old. COTA was our family's second car. It's where I spent most of my time until I drove. And to this day, it is still the way that she gets around the city. So I want to not only acknowledge COTA, but I also want to give it up to all of our bus drivers and all of the folks who literally keep the city moving. So if we could just give them a round of applause for all the folks, hardworking people at COTA. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Director of Local Government Affairs at COTA, Kelsey Ellingson, to speak further.
Thank you, Chair Barosa de Padilla, Council President Harden, President Pro Tem Dorans, and members. Welcome back, sir. It is so good to be back with you this evening. You know I love this place. So thanks for sharing time for COTA. I bring greetings from our CEO Joanna Pinkerton and our Board of Trustees. We are truly grateful to add some local flair to Ohio Loves Transit Week by honoring tomorrow as COTA Loves Transit Day. I hope that you all choose to take a ride tomorrow and to use the hashtag Columbus Loves COTA in honor of that day. But in truth, this day memorializes the actions we already see from our leaders every day in your support of transit in our city. And that's because, you get it, obviously, from your remarks, Chair, you have a personal connection to it, and you see all that transit has to offer our community. Transit isn't just a social determinant of health. It's the one that reinforces all of the others, too. We at COTA know how deeply woven into the daily lives of our residents transit truly is, whether that's going to school or work, the doctor, even just to have fun. You were talking to a person whose education was made possible by transit, whose first jobs as a little campaign worker more than a decade ago was made possible by being able to take the two up to 161 and unhitch my bike from the front of the vehicle and bike the rest of the way to Huntley Road. This is me, but this is the story of so many people in our community. And yet, there are still others who have yet to catch a ride with us. So it's because of that, I'm all the more appreciative of your partnership to amplify our service for that reason, but also your support to help us usher in the next chapter through LinkUS, the region's plan for rapid transit. So again, thank you, Chair Barosa de Padilla, Council President, for your steadfast leadership in particular, especially on LinkUS. Our thanks also, of course, go to Mayor Ginther, Director Gallagher, I think I saw Deputy Director McGinnis there, the whole public service team for their partnership every day to transform mobility in Columbus. And finally, I would just want to give another shout out to the people standing behind me, COTA operators, maintenance techs, and supervisors. None of this is possible without them. So if I could allow them to say their names and their roles, thank you so much.
Ladies first. My name is Daniel Roshi Hay, and I'm a transit operator.
I'm Lloyd Lester. I'm a transit operator.
My name is Elias Nunez Rojas. I am a mechanic in the vehicle maintenance department.
And my name is Keith Dalton. I am a transit operator.
And then there's a group of people who aren't in this little lineup right here who are really important to operation, too. And those are our coach cleaners. I don't know if you know, but every single night, every single coach is cleaned and put out back on the street in the morning to give the best service possible to residents. So I just want to recognize them as well. Thank you again for your time tonight.
Absolutely. And I also want to just also recognize that, you know, during COVID, when, many times when the city staffed, you did not, right? And you kept literally the city moving. You kept our essential workers going. And so I just want to acknowledge that. I want to acknowledge even during a snowstorm, once a Level 2 emergency, COTA is free, and you were still out on the roads, right? Rain, sleet, or snow, COTA is always there. And so I just want to thank all of you for your service to our residents to keep our city moving. I rode a bus with Keith. He was very safe. Highly recommend, 10 out of 10. Any other comments or questions from my colleagues? Thank you. Happy Columbus Loves COTA Day. Hold on, I need to pass this resolution. Can I move for passage?
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you. And that's all for me this evening. Thank you.
Councilmember Brown. Councilmember Dorans. Councilmember, favor.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Just want to wish everyone a happy Black History Month. This year's Black History Month theme is resistance. And when I think about the current attack on our schools and the education that our students may or may not receive, I cannot think of anyone better to kick off this month than the father of Black History Month, Mr. Carter G. Woodson. Mr. Woodson was a scholar whose dedication to celebrating the historic contributions of Black people led to the establishment of Black History Month, marked every February since 1976. Mr. Woodson fervently believed that Black people should be proud of their heritage, and all Americans should understand the largely overlooked achievements of Black Americans. Woodson overcame early obstacles to become a prominent historian and author of several notable books on Black Americans. Born in 1875 to illiterate parents who were former slaves, his schooling was erratic, and he helped out on the family farm initially when he was a young boy. And as a teen, he worked in the coal mines of West Virginia. He then went on to work as a teacher and as a school principal before obtaining his bachelor's degree in literature. After graduating from college, he became a school supervisor in the Philippines and later traveled throughout Europe and Asia. In addition to earning a master's degree from the University of Chicago, he became the second Black American after W E B Du Bois from Harvard University. He joined the faculty of Howard University, eventually serving as the dean of the College of Arts and Sciences. But after being barred from attending American Historical Association conferences despite being a dues-paying member, Woodson believed that the white-dominated historical profession had little interest in Black history. He saw African-American contributions overlooked, ignored, and even suppressed by the writers of history textbooks and the teachers who used them. For Black scholars to study and preserve Black history, Woodson realized he would have to create a separate institutional structure. With funding from several philanthropic foundations, Woodson, the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History, in 1915 in Chicago, describing its mission as "the scientific study of the neglected aspects of Negro life and history." Woodson's devotion to showcasing the contributions of Black Americans bore fruit in 1926 when he launched Negro History Week in the second week of February to coincide with the birthdays of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass. Woodson's concept was later expanded into Black History Month. Mr. Woodson died from a heart attack at the age of 74 in 1950. His legacy lives on every February when schools across the nation study Black American history, empowering Black Americans and educating others on the achievements of Black Americans. Once again, this year's theme is resistance, and so I encourage you all to, when you have time, look up little-known Black history facts and educate yourselves on the contributions of Black Americans to our general society, knowing that Black history is American history. That is all, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Reemy.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I just want to remind people to mark your calendars for April 1st for the Second Annual Cleaner Columbus Citywide Cleanup. It's going to be kicking off at 9:00 a.m. at the Wolf Park Shelter House. Join your fellow neighbors for a morning of service, picking up litter and helping make Columbus a Cleaner Columbus. You can learn more and register by visiting www.cleanercolumbus.org. That is all I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I want to use my time during resolutions and announcements. One, to acknowledge the terrible earthquake that hit Turkey and Syria this morning. If you've seen videos of those buildings falling down, you see that, I think the death toll is north of 1,300 people in Turkey and Syria. So we will keep them in our prayers and in due time, provide any support that we can as a community and as a country. Second, I want to say that this council is thinking about the gentleman that was shot by police last night. We're also thinking about the officers involved and the community that was present for that shooting. Anytime that guns are used in our streets, we know that that creates real trauma. And so we are lifting the entire community. I think that as we speak, or just a few minutes ago, the police body camera was released to the public. And so we don't have much more information right now, but we do know that the State's Bureau of Criminal Investigation has agreed to take on the case. And once BCI completes their investigation, depending on the facts, it can be handed over to the Franklin County prosecutor, as well as administrative investigation will be conducted, where administrative investigation can be conducted. And we know that because of the support of Columbus residents, we now have a civilian review board as well that can look over these types of cases in review. So want to raise that as our community keeps that neighborhood, that family, and those officers in our prayer. But finally, and I would at least just ask Steve Stein with IFF, our firefighters, to stand up. This council wanted to take a few minutes to remember the lives lost in the service of three Columbus firefighters that have passed away in recent weeks. We have Battalion Chief Richard Richardson, firefighter Michael Calafatis, and firefighter Gary Chowders. This whole council has been keeping these firefighters, their families, in our prayers. You know, folks aren't made a hero by how they die. They are made a hero by how they lived and the service that they provided. And these firefighters served our community. And so first, I would see if Chair would like to say anything, but then I'll ask for a moment of silence for these firefighters that we've lost.
Thank you, Council President Harden. It's been a hard 10 days or so for our firefighters in the division. And we felt it was important to recognize what our first responders face on a day-in-and-day-out basis. They are superheroes in what they do in their careers, but sometimes they're also very human in what they deal with at home. And so, you know, it's with great sadness that we recognize these three individuals and know that we're going to be there every step of the way to provide the support needed for the men and women that serve the Division of Fire. So thank you.
Please join me in a moment of silence. Are there any other comments by our elected officials, auditor, city attorney's office, or clerk? At this time, the following ordinances will be removed from the consent portion of the agenda. Ordinance 0013-2023 from the Utilities Department and 0449-2023 from the Health and Human Services. Are there any other requests by members of council for removal of an item on the consent action? Seeing none, we now have a motion to waive reading of titles of 30-day legislation. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read into the record ordinance numbers on 30-day legislation for tonight's agenda?
Economic Development Committee ordinance is 262, 263, 265, 266-2023. Technology Committee ordinance 260-2023. Public Service and Transportation Committee ordinance 285-2023. Recreation and Parks Committee ordinance 3518-2022. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 156 and 187-2023. Housing Committee ordinance 215-2023. Criminal Justice and Judiciary Committee ordinance 242-2023. Environment Committee ordinance 343-2023. Zoning Committee ordinance is 345, 360-2023, and 1672-2022. Variance is 336, 346, 348, 361-2023.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we want to address an ordinance in the Economic Development Committee that's on first reading. With that, I'm going to turn the podium over to Chair Bangston.
Thank you, President Harden. Tonight, on page 3 in our agenda in the Economic Development Committee for first reading, we have ordinance 0263-2023 to accept the application of KIP Columbus Foundation for the annexation of creation of certain territory containing 0.59-plus-minus acres in Mifflin Township. I would like to also pass the mic at this time to President Pro Tem Dorans to give us a little background on this legislation and our action tonight.
Thank you, Chair Bangston. Last year, teachers and support staff at KIP Columbus began to move to organize a union due to workplace concerns. I was fortunate to speak with some of those folks early on in their organizing work, and I was certainly struck by both their enthusiasm and professionalism. These teachers and staff want to voice in their workplace to help ensure students succeed. I know that personally. My little brother from the Big Brothers program attended KIP, and with the support of these educators, he became the first in his family to attend college. I, along with many elected officials and community leaders, reached out to the superintendent and board to express our support for these organizing efforts and encouraged KIP leadership to abstain from opposing these efforts as a supermajority of teachers and support staff signed cards asking to form a union. Unfortunately, KIP leadership did not listen to these valued workers or community leaders and have reportedly engaged in union busting, pulling teachers from classrooms and attempted to intimidate them from supporting the formation of a union. This past week, we learned that the Ohio Federation of Teachers, the union seeking to represent these workers, has filed an unfair labor practice against the school for these activities and for the failure of these union busters from adhering to even the most basic of reporting requirements under the Labor Management Reporting Disclosure Act. Until these investigations are concluded, I do not believe we as a city should be moving forward with any legislation, even something as minor as an annexation request for involving KIP Columbus. So thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to speak on this this evening.
And I want to thank you, President Pro Tem, for your continued leadership in this space and fighting for our families. That's what this is all about. Folks' rights to organize, folks' rights to join a union for better opportunities, not just for themselves as teachers, but for the children and family that they serve there at KIP. And so thank you for your leadership. Thank you, Council President, as well. Thank you, Council President, as well. Are there any other questions or comments from my colleagues? All right, seeing none, I would like to move to refer this ordinance back to committee.
Bankston, Barrosa, De Padilla, Brown, Dorance, Faber, Remy, President Harden.
Refer back to committee.
Thank you, President Harden.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent actions. Will the clerk now read those into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 26X and 25X-2023. Economic Development Committee ordinance 3007-2022, and ordinance is 36261331-2023. Small and Minority Business Committee ordinance 363-2023. Public Service and Transportation Committee Resolutions 1X, 2X, 11X-2023, and ordinances 73 and 210-2023. Neighborhoods and Immigrant Refugee and Migrant Affairs Committee ordinance 448-2023. Education Committee ordinance 447-2023. Public Utilities Committee ordinance is 54, 56, 61, 63, 65, 69, 72, 75, 76, 78, 87, 92, 114, 139, 143, 163, 255, 257, 302, and 319-2023. Housing Committee ordinance 3582-2022, and 218 and 251-2023. Health and Human Services Committee ordinance is 109, 158, 209, 216-2023. Public Safety Committee ordinance 3577-2022, ordinance is 44, 111, 115, 116, 166-2023. Administration Committee ordinance 197 and 240-2023. Finance Committee ordinance is 142, 165, 191, 192, 201, 234, 270, 288, 300-2023. Appointments from Mayor's Office numbered A0015, 37, 38, 39, 40, 41, 43, 44, 45, 46, 47, 48, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55, 56, 57, 58, 59, 60, 61, 62, 63, 64, 65, 66, 67, 68, 69, 70, 71, 72, 73, 74, and 75-2023.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have three speakers on the consent portion of the agenda. The first speaker to come before council is Mr. Nate Wilkins, speaking on housing ordinance 3582-2022. Mr. Wilkins, welcome back to council.
1612 Arlington Avenue, Mr. Lathan George Wilkins. I'm not going to be in support of this or opposition of this till I state my case. Speaking on ordinance of 3582-2022, y'all have, I believe it's nine parcels in this landbank. First one is 1496 of Arlington Avenue. Before I bought my house, me and my real estate, we drove down that block, several blocks in the area. 1496 was a beautiful home at the time, but to my knowledge, this particular home had a lot of dogs, and it sat vacant for quite some time. I love certain houses like this in this neighborhood, but it still sits at the vacant land. 1495, mind you, it was a unique house. It was a different type of house in this neighborhood on Arlington Avenue. Unfortunately, that house got burnt. The kitchen got burnt. I just don't see how property sits like this and come demolition. A beautiful home here, but it's no longer there, and it still sits boarded up and vacant. There was no for sale sign or nothing like that. I've been in my house for 16 years. 1501, let me speak about this for a minute. I live on Arlington Avenue, and I know 1501 Genesee Avenue. It was a beautiful home, was broken into, disnowed, blase and blase. But again, here we have these properties that sit in the landbank. In the next couple of days, we see this stuff being torn down. But again, I fell in love with this property. Again, it was broken into, the roof didn't cave in, and all this other stuff. If we are going to do something with these properties, just hear me out. If we are going to do something with these properties, y'all talk about a lot of affordable house, but I don't hear anything coming from y'all with disability houses or multi-disability people sitting in wheelchairs or multi-handicapped. This is what really frustrates me so bad here, that I stand up here time after time again. If something's going to be done, I want the residents to know what's going on on that block so they can take ownership in these vacant lots to do the work. You know, if I want something to be done, I want to have a hand in what happens to my community. I'm between Arlington, Myrtle Avenue, and Genesee Avenue, but I just don't see the residents are getting involved in this. We want some notification if something's going to happen to these lot. I don't want to see Habitat coming in here if we don't get notification. Thank you for my time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins, for your advocacy. I think it was well, well met by this council, and we hear you. We will ask and work with Habitat to make sure that that type of engagement happens. The next speaker to come before council is Gillian Dyer, speaking on ordinance 0166 in the Public Safety Committee. Welcome to council.
Hello, this is ordinance 0166 regarding giving COVID funds to Columbus Police. I am currently recovering from my second round of COVID in five months because my roommate has to go to work in person, and I make well above the median income in Columbus, but I can't afford to live alone. So I guess I'm just a little concerned that there's an unstated emergency that would require $628,000 in COVID relief funds to go to the police on top of the up to $11 million that they are asking for just today, depending on how many of the vehicles actually go to I just, I don't understand how that could be related to anything that has to do with COVID. I don't know if Columbus has done any studies showing that COVID has caused an increase in crime. I think it's actually decreasing in the city. I don't know if we've done any studies showing that increasing the police budget would reduce crime around the city or COVID-related crime or COVID cases. We do have a lot of police in my neighborhood, but just Saturday night, I caught somebody breaking into my car, and I chased him, and he started crying and apologizing, and he said he would rather have a job, but he has a criminal record, and he can't get hired anywhere, and he offered to fix the window of my car. We talked for about an hour, and he asked me for a hug afterwards. He had been having issues with some family members, either passing away from COVID or something happened, and he is living in a trailer. So these are the people who I think need COVID relief more than the police who take up, I think it's like a third of our budget. I don't know why we're not using COVID funds to try out a guaranteed income for people to try to reduce crime, because I do know that financial instability is actually the biggest contributor to crime. I have a couple of studies that I was looking at. There was a 2017 study showing that expanding Medicaid and access to mental health services decreased annual crime by 3% and could save states $13 billion a year. In 2018, there was a study in Philadelphia that showed that cleaning up vacant lots reduced gun crime and gun violence by 29%. 2019 in New York, street lighting reduced outdoor crime by 36%. A 2020 study, unconditional guaranteed income significantly reduces crime and violence and shows that the leading driver of crime is economic instability. Again, something that I wish we could use some of the relief funds for. Give you guys one more.
Ms. Dyer, just to keep us moving. You referenced a couple of studies. We would like to see those. I think a lot of your advocacy lands well here, like we hear you. And, but, and I want the safety department to speak on 0166, but I know someone else is speaking on this as well. So if you don't mind, we'll have the other speaker come, and then if you could get us your written testimony, that data, I'd appreciate it.
You can have it, yeah.
Thank you so much. The next speaker to speak on 0166-2023 is Dewan Sharp. Dewan, welcome back to council.
How's everybody doing today? I'm going to keep it short, because I see I'm on a timer, and I'm on TV. So COVID money, COVID money. I had COVID a couple of times, but they made me go to work. So let's see, $60,000. Am I reading that part right? Somewhere around there. So y'all about to give all this money for what? Are y'all about to paint another car and put Martin Luther King sign on there, even though this is the time of resistance? Or are we going to use this money for some training? Have y'all seen the latest video from your cops? They shot this man without giving him really a chase. This man was 60 years old, and they shot him in the back like five or six times. So that money could be used for training, maybe a little bit of PT, maybe a little bit of, what's that word called, politeness? So my phone was over the yellow tape. I guess I was videotaping something I wasn't supposed to be videotaping, because clearly they're watching my videos, because they moved the cop cars of what I was video, and they moved it so to block me. But they brought the cops over there. They wasn't messing with us. They brought the cop over there to talk to us, to tell me to move. The victim's family was talking to the cop. Another cop just rolled by. Like I said, we don't know what's going on. Out the blue. Then he comes back, and then he walks behind us, and he flips us off as he's walking around. He wouldn't give us her name. It's on Facebook. It's on Facebook, so maybe we can use that money for a little bit of sensitivity training for some of these crazy cops. What else? What else? I had a joke about Brian Steele, but I see he's not here today. That's very odd that he's suing y'all, but y'all trust him to protect y'all. That's crazy to me. That's real crazy to me. Sensei, Ms. Megan Reed has not had a call from who y'all get money for. Somewhere over there. I don't know your name, but Steele has not got a call yet, but I guarantee that you still getting them checks either the first or the 15th. I guarantee you still getting them checks, but they have not got a call yet. Let's see. I hope y'all seen that video. I hope y'all don't let nobody change up, and don't let them bring back the jump-out boys, because they're going to just put Black people's heads inside of tubes and watch and laugh at it like they do. And the BCI, we need a new thing, because they was high-fiving these cops and saying that we're on your side, and we're going to be out your way. And also, the cop that shot this man in the back already shot somebody before. We need our own database to track cops. We can do this on our own level. The government ain't going to do it, so I'm asking y'all, please make a database with the cops that mess up, just like how y'all do us, how, you know, when I go for a job and they say I can't get the job because I'm a felon. Can we do that, the same thing for them? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Director, would you speak to 0166 and why we're choosing to use COVID money for?
President Harden, President Pro Tem Dorance, and Councilmember Remy. The monies which have been identified as American Rescue Plan funding has been certified and identified a while back to purchase 32 fixed lands, license plate readers, some additional rapid deployment license plate readers, and to hire three different crime analysts, two for, to evaluate the information received through the license plate readers, and one to evaluate the information received through crime shot spotters. All three of these items were specifically designed to work together in particular areas of the city where our neighborhood's safety cameras are. The LPRs will be tied into the neighborhood's safety cameras, as will the license plate readers, to give an indication of movement of individuals involved in serious crimes, such as homicides and felonious assaults. As far as the origin of the funding, American Rescue Plan, this funding, I was advised, was from, specifically from the Justice Department, assigned to the city of Columbus. For the last year and a half, two of these LPRs have been used quite successfully, primarily for the recovery of stolen cars, which we've had a tremendous problem with, and returning those vehicles back to their designated owners. Other than that, and the hiring of the additional crime analysts, individuals for the crime analyzation, that's what the money's been earmarked and identified for.
Thank you. And as I understand it, to your point, these are not from the local and state funds. These funds are from the Justice Department and can only be used for safety-related.
That is correct. The federal funds from the Justice Department can only be used for law enforcement, criminal justice.
Are there any questions or comments to the director regarding this or any other consent action? If not, here are no other further questions or comments on the consent agenda. May I have a motion for approval of these items? Is there a second? Clerk, please call the roll by voice.
Mr. Bankston.
Yes, with the exception of ordinance 3007-2022, from which I'm abstaining. And 0449-2023.
Ms. Barrosa De Padilla? Mr. Brown? Mr. Dorance? Ms. Faber?
Yes, with the exception of ordinance 0449-2023, and A0040, A0041, A0043, A0044, A0045, A0046-2023, from which I'm abstaining.
Mr. Remy? President Harden?
Yes. Ordinances are passed with the noted exceptions. We'll now proceed to second reading and 30-day postponed and emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is Public Service chaired by Councilmember Barrosa De Padilla. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. I have three ordinances today in public service, and so I'm going to start a little bit out of order, and we're going to have a presentation on a piece of legislation that we're passing tonight. This past week, we held a public hearing to discuss that ordinance and overwhelmingly heard from residents about their concerns for safety for our most vulnerable roadway users, so that would be our cyclists and our pedestrians. We heard from about 70 residents giving testimony both in person and online, or I'm sorry, written testimony about speed reduction in the downtown area. So I want to give a little bit of context for this legislation. We are focused on the downtown area for speed reduction as part of our Vision Zero strategy. And the reason that we're starting with the downtown area is because we have a unique opportunity where, written into the Ohio code, we actually can influence the downtown or this area, because it's a business district, and we can make decisions about the speed limit because we have jurisdiction over this area. So I know that there's probably some questions. This is probably one of the number-one top concerns that we hear from residents about how to reduce speeds in their communities. We'll talk about that in just a second. But I want to talk about Vision Zero and our strategy and some of the strategies that we're using downtown. So speed is a leading factor in the likelihood of a crash occurring and crash severity. Reducing how fast vehicles travel on city streets will help to reduce fatal and serious injury crashes and save lives. When a vulnerable road user is in a crash, 10 miles per hour can often be the difference between life and death. So as you can see on this So as you can see on this slide, just if you go 20 miles per hour, nine out of 10 pedestrians will survive. Go up to 30 miles per hour, what is that, five out of 10 pedestrians will survive. And then we go up to 40 miles per hour, one out of 10 pedestrians will survive. So you can see the difference that when you start to lower our speeds, when these crashes occur, folks have more of an ability to survive. Since 2015, we have doubled the number of people killed from crashes on Columbus streets. And I want to note that I've said crashes and not accidents because these are preventable incidences. If people use the rules of the road, if they use the tools that are on the roadways, we know that we can prevent crashes from happening. So we can see how we've doubled in crashes since 2015. Vision Zero Columbus is focused on ending crash-related fatalities and serious injuries on our streets while increasing safe, healthy, and equitable mobility for all. The goal is that we have zero, meaning no fatalities in the city, due to crashes. So I talked about the uniqueness of this time in downtown, and I want to be clear that this change that we're making now is really about building infrastructure for the future of Columbus. We know that these crashes, we know speeding, we know that creating safer areas for folks to cross the street is all part of the strategy, and we know that we need to go wider than the downtown area and make sure that this is hitting all corners and all communities across Columbus. I shared during the, and Maria Cantrell, you can start making your way up, I shared during the public hearing that when I was a younger person, my first real job was downtown and on the way to my car in the evening, I was actually hit by a car, my body was hit by a car. And so I know that it is scary, it's traumatizing. 20 some years later, crossing the street, I still have to take some deep breaths. So I'm going to hand it over to Maria Cantrell to talk about Vision Zero. She's our Vision Zero coordinator, and then why we are prioritizing safety over speed and the strategy to reduce crash fatalities in downtown area.
Thank you so much for having me, President Harden and Councilmember Barosa de Padilla and all of our city council members. I appreciate the time. As we saw on the map earlier, we do have a map showing the boundary of what we're looking at today for the speed limit reduction. So this is one of the strategies in our Vision Zero Action Plan. This was an initial two-year plan that we're starting for Vision Zero with a series of strategies to eliminate fatal and serious injury crashes. This plan started about two years ago. It's coming to an end here in March, and then we are, as we developed it, was in the middle of the pandemic, we're, let's get started, and then we knew we would continue. We're in the process of developing our next phase of that Vision Zero Action Plan. So truly, this is just the beginning, but we had some really impactful strategies in that first two years, and we're really excited for the fruition of this strategy to move forward where, as Councilmember Barosa de Padilla mentioned, downtown Columbus is our business district, and as such, that allows us an Ohio revised code to revert all the speed limits downtown to 25 miles an hour on every street in that blue shaded area and that boundary of that map. So any streets that weren't already 25 will revert to that prima facie, Ohio revised code speed, not including alleys which are only 15 miles an hour or any active school zones that may be in place. But we know that that speeds take lives, and even in the data we've shown you, we're really seeing, particularly in the last couple of years, that of those people that were killed, a third of them are pedestrians. And we know we have a high pedestrian area downtown. So it makes a lot of sense for us to focus on this speed reduction here. So with this speed reduction, it is not just changing a speed limit sign and changing a law. We also looked at over 130 traffic signals in the downtown area to coordinate the signal timing on those traffic signals to regulate those speeds as well. So if a car drives 25 miles an hour, they can get a green light. If you go faster than that, you're gonna eventually get caught up by a red traffic signal, so you're disincentivized to speed in that area. Along with that traffic signal evaluation, we're also doing a really exciting change to some of our downtown signal timing, and we're starting with leading pedestrian intervals. I wanted to share with you a little bit about what that is and a couple of examples of where that's already in place. But what leading pedestrian intervals do, and this is something a lot of Vision Zero plans around the country have implemented, is it's basically a head start, a few seconds where that walk signal comes on where all the traffic signals are red for the vehicles, but the pedestrian signal comes on to three to seven seconds in advance so that the pedestrians have an ability to start crossing. This gives them a better, makes motorists more aware of the pedestrians, they can see them a little bit better, and this is particularly impactful on, for crashes where cars are turning left or right at the intersection where pedestrians are walking. So we have a couple of examples already in place, but there's going to be another seven or so intersections downtown with more to come with some of this signal timing. Here's an example at High Street and Whittier, and we have a video that I'm gonna explain showing how it happened. So the light is changing, it's orange there, now the traffic signal's still red, you see the pedestrian walk signal started, our pedestrian gets well into the crosswalk, and there, it went green for the cars, they can see the pedestrian a little bit better before the cars on Whittier start to turn, so that truck was waiting for that leading pedestrian interval. And one other example that we have is currently at Mound and High Street, you know, our Franklin County courts are there, and we have a lot of people coming in, they're not familiar with the area. Mound Street kind of flows in from I-70, there's a lot going on, people are stopping, jumping out of cars, and we definitely had a lot of interactions with pedestrians and vehicles in this area. So again, you see the leading, this is on both sides, crossing the north side and the south side of High Street at Mound. We'll play another video, I think it might jump there again. The signal is changing, it's red in all directions, and the pedestrians have a few seconds to start, and now it turned green. So again, anywhere from three to seven seconds for that leading pedestrian interval. This is a simple thing that we're looking to change. It doesn't cost a lot of money to do signal timing changes, but it has shown to have anywhere from 13 to 60% reduction in those pedestrian and vehicle collisions. And that additional red time also helps the T-bone angle crashes from cars because you have more of that red in all directions time. So I'm really excited for these changes to move forward, you know, both for safety for pedestrians and all our motorists on Columbus streets. And if you have any more questions about how the speed reduction works, I'm happy to answer them, or the LPIs, leading pedestrian intervals.
So I want to open it up for my colleagues if you have any questions for Maria. Great. I just, again, wanted to say, this is a small step forward to ensuring the safety of our residents. I think about, you know, kids that ride Coda who are crossing streets. I think about, again, our cyclist who use bicycles as the main form of transportation, and we want to continue to encourage that. I know we have a speaker today that we'll hear from in just a second who will share her story. I think about folks who, again, walking is their main mode of transportation, and how do we make it safer for folks of different abilities to ensure that they are safe on our streets? So I, this is a small step forward. I mentioned before that I know that folks will have questions about how they reduce speed limits in their neighborhoods, so you talk a little bit about that process, Maria.
Certainly. We get asked about speed limit reductions all the time. Again, most of our speed limits are controlled by state legislation, but there is a process to pursue reductions through a speed studies process that we have worked on with ODOT in the past because it is controlled by ODOT, and they're even looking to improve that plan even further. But we work with them to study the speed limit, and it also includes factoring in where we have our most vulnerable road users as we do that speed study. So we hear from the community all the time, and we look for those opportunities, whether it's from 311, from our neighborhood liaisons, or from what we hear directly from our citizens. So we're keeping at it. Lots of work to do, but we're at a great start.
Thank you. And we announced this morning that our office put forth about $300,000 towards tactical urbanism, which are short-term traffic fixes. We're doing a project on Thurman Avenue right now that will help to address some of the traffic concerns that we've had along Thurman Avenue. We have a high injury network that literally we can see where some of the most dangerous intersections are in the city. And again, we are working with the Department of Public Service to start to address those, so I just wanted to point that out. So Maria, thank you for your work, and thank you for the work that you're doing with Vision Zero. We also have been, this past year, started working with young people, especially as we have new drivers. I have a new driver coming up on cue, which is very, very scary. But how we are talking to our young people also about ensuring that they're not distracted, they're using the tools that are on the road so that everyone can remain safe. So thank you again for your work. And I know that we do have one speaker, Jillian Dyer, do you want to come back down?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to, I'd already planned on coming to reiterate my support for lowering speed limits whenever it came up, but I also wanted to reiterate my concern for how it's going to be enforced. I stood up here on Tuesday and said that I was afraid that having police be the main enforcement rather than structural changes to the road to put actual physical barriers between people in cars and other people in the street, that we might see more negative interactions. And when I got home, I said to a friend that I guarantee within six months CPD is going to kill somebody or shoot somebody in a traffic stop, and it took five days for them to do that. They shot, as you know, Michael Cleveland yesterday when he was running away from a traffic stop and after he threw what appeared to be a gun away from him so he could no longer use it. So I'm a little hesitant to be fully supportive because I'm afraid that CPD is going to ask for more funding because they've already said that $371 million is not going to be enough and that they're short-staffed and it might be difficult to enforce some of these speed limits. And I also wanted to know, so when we ask for better bike infrastructure and actual physical protection, we're told that it can't happen overnight, we need to be patient, and we need to do more road studies. I wonder if we've done any studies asking if police actually stop people from driving poorly? I have a video from my way here tonight of somebody running a red light on Summit with a cop at the intersection. They don't enforce it. They use traffic stops as a reason to ask people about other things. I have more studies for you guys on what we can do to actually change behavior that would cost less than giving the police millions of dollars every year. There's a 1974 book called The Three Fixes, The Technological, Cognitive, and Structural in Water and Community Development, and it basically, the takeaway that book is that you have to put physical barriers in place. And there is a 2015 study on texting and driving. It highlights the difference between injunctive norms and descriptive norms. So injunctive norms in sociology are basically what we tell people we should do, what is approved of or disapproved of, or what the law says that we should do. Descriptive norms are what people actually do. The study found that most people think that using a phone while driving is bad, but 69% of people talk on the phone while driving and 31% text or send and read emails while driving. 50% of people 18 to 24 text and drive despite it being illegal. So I hope that we'll see better enforcement, and I hope that the Office of Education, Housing Parks, Neighborhoods, Department of Public Service, Infrastructure Management, Traffic Management, Public Health, Design and Construction, and, I read the wrong thing here, get a combined 320 billion a year. I hope one day that can be more than the cops 370 million. Thank you.
Thank you, Jillian. I want to thank you again for your advocacy. I know that you are meeting with Maria later this week to talk about some of your concerns and some of your ideas. I do want to talk about, I want to address a couple of things. You talked about biking. Assistant Director McGinnis, you want to talk a little bit about, I know that we have a biking plan that we are shortly going to be rolling out. Can you just talk about that for just a second?
Thank you very much, Councilmember Barosa de Padilla, President Harden, and members of council. Our department is working diligently right now on putting together a update to the city's comprehensive biking network. Network has kicked off and we'll be making progress this year on that, and we'll have updates for council and lots of chances for engagement with the community over the course of this year.
Thank you. And one other thing that I want to also talk about, and I appreciate the last part of what you said around how we are thinking about the tools that we have on the streets. And my hope is, enforcement is just one of five strategies that we have under Vision Zero, right? And I think that part of these tools, they mean nothing if we all don't use them. If as drivers, we don't follow speed limits, we don't stop for folks in the crosswalk, I mean, we have flashing beacon crosswalks that people still ignore. If we don't give the right of way to our cyclists and our pedestrians, because in a two-ton vehicle, you are obviously more protected than someone who's on a bicycle or on two feet. And so I want to ensure that this is part of us also changing how we think about how we use our roadways, how we really become a multimodal city to ensure that there is equity in how people move around the city and how we are thinking about and caring for each other. And then that starts to have reduction of some of the other strategies if we start to really use the tools that are on the road. So I want to thank you again for your advocacy. I want to thank you for coming last week. I want to thank you for coming again today. I always say, but it is always before the people that change happens. I look forward to hearing what comes out of your conversation with Maria. The offer is always open to meet with my office so that we can continue to have conversations together. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and read the piece of legislation so we can move along if there's no other questions or comments from my colleagues. I haven't read it yet, Councilmember Bangston, but thank you. Give me one second. Here we go. Okay, 3573-2022 to authorize the Director of Public Service to request that the Director of the Ohio Department of Transportation establish a reasonable and safe prima facie speed limit of 25 miles per hour on the roadways within the downtown district within the core pedestrian areas if they are not already posted as such, to repeal any and all speed limit ordinances and resolutions on said roadways and to declare an emergency. Can I get a second?
Second.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, President Harden.
And by can I get a second, I meant can I move for passage, but I'll do better next time. Ordinance, I have two more pieces real quick. 3538-2022 to authorize the city attorney to file complaints in order to immediately appropriate and accept the remaining fee and simple and lesser real estate necessary to timely complete the FRA intersection improvements, Cleveland Avenue, Fifth Avenue to Leonard Road Project to authorize an expenditure of $500 and to declare an emergency. The project includes pedestrian improvements at seven intersections along Cleveland Avenue, including enhanced crosswalk markings, installation of rectangular rapid flashing beacons or pedestrian hybrid beacons, and installation of new ADA compliant curb ramps. The ordinance will allow the city's acquisition of real estate located in the vicinity of Cleveland Avenue corridor from Fifth Avenue, which will make, improve, or repair certain portions of the public right away. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
And last, ordinance 0148-2023 to authorize the city attorney to file complaints in order to immediately appropriate and accept the remaining fee, simple and lesser real estate necessary to timely complete the arterial street rehabilitation, State Route 161, I-71 to Cleveland Avenue Phase 1, Part 2 Project to authorize an expenditure of $121,305 from the streets and highways, go bond fund, and to declare an emergency. So this project will add pedestrian and bike facilities from Maple Canyon to Cleveland Avenue, new traffic signals, pavement widening and resurfacing, raised medians on the side streets, and the installation of many roundabouts. The ordinance will allow the city's acquisition of real estate located in the vicinity of State Route 161 in the area of Parkville Street and Spring Run Drive, which will make help or improve certain repair portions of the public right away. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And that is all in public service. Thank you for all hanging in. There was an important conversation. I also urge folks to look back at the hearing if you want to learn more about Vision Zero and our strategies around Vision Zero. Thank you.
That's awesome. Thank you for your leadership. The next committee to come before council is the Recreation and Parks chaired by Councilmember Brown. Brown. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. This evening, I have ordinance Zero One Zero One, 2023, to authorize the Director of Recreation and Parks to enter into a contract with Alfred, Inc., for the Fran Ryan Center project. To authorize the transfer of $3 million within the Recreation and Parks voted bond fund. To authorize the amendment of the 2022 capital improvement budget. To authorize the expenditure of $5 million from the Recreation and Parks voted bond fund and to declare an emergency. The Fran Ryan Center will sit on four acre site where formerly the Douglas School was located at a 51 South Douglas Street. The site was purchased by the city in 2020 and the Recreation Parks Department acquired a unique opportunity to develop an innovative senior-focused community center and park. Today's ordinance establishes a construction manager at risk contract for the first $5 million of the overall anticipated construction budget of $26 million. Director Reese, do you have anything you wish to add to the conversation?
Thank you, President Harden, Chair Brown, and other council members. What I would say is that the construction manager at risk contract allows us to move forward with purchases of supplies, being in the supply demand that limits us from moving forward in a timely manner on this construction project. This allows us to move forward and continue with our build during this time. And that's all I would say.
If there are no questions from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Utilities Committee, chaired by Councilmember Dorance. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you. First, we have ordinance Zero 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 Four Dash 2023, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into a construction contract with Underground Utilities Inc. for the Varsted Avenue area water line improvement project in an amount of up to $3,384,783. To encumber $2,000 for prevailing wage services provided by the Department of Public Service. To authorize the appropriation transfer of $3,384,783 in three cents from the Water System Reserve Fund to the Water Supply revolving loan account fund. To authorize the appropriation of expenditure of $3,384,783 within the Water Supply revolving loan account fund to authorize an expenditure up to $2,000 within the Water General Obligation voted bond fund and to amend the 2022 capital improvement budget. The goal of this project is replace existing water lines that have a high break frequency. The placement of these water lines will improve water service, decrease burden on maintenance operations, and reduce water loss in the Olentangie West planning area. Do my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have Zero Zero Four Five Dash 2023, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate current and pending universal term contract purchase agreements for the purchase of materials, supplies, and services for the Division of Sewerage and Drainage, Sully Wastewater Treatment Plant, to authorize the expenditure of $1,713,750 from the Sewer Operating Fund. The parts, materials, and services from these contracts are used to monitor, maintain, and repair equipment throughout Sully Wastewater Treatment Plant as required by federal and state standards. Do my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance Zero Zero Five Two Dash 2023, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter a construction contract with Shelley and Sands for the Norris Drive area water line improvement project, the amount of up to $3,801,523 to authorize the appropriation and transfer of $3,801, I'm sorry, $3,801,523 in the Water Supply, Water System Reserve Fund and the Water Supply revolving loan account fund. To authorize the appropriation and transfer of up to $3,801,523 within the Water Supply revolving loan account fund, to authorize expenditure of up to $2,000 within the Water General Obligation voted bond fund, to pay the Department of Public Service for prevailing wage services, and to amend, and to authorize amendment to the 2022 capital improvement budget. The goal of this project as well is to replace existing lines that have high break frequencies, again, to reduce burden on maintenance operations, reduce water loss. Do my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance Zero Zero Six Zero Dash 2023, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations resulting from the ordinance with the appropriate current and pending universal term contract purchase agreements for the purchase of materials, supplies, and services for the Division of Sewers and Drainage, Jackson Pike Wastewater Treatment Plant, and to authorize expenditure of $1,725,000 from the Sewerage Operating Fund. The parts, materials, and services from these contracts are used to monitor, maintain, and repair equipment throughout Jackson Pike Wastewater Treatment Plant, again, as required by state and federal standards. Do my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance Zero Zero Six Four Dash 2023, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate current and pending universal term contract purchase agreements for the purchase of materials, supplies, and services for the Division of Sewers and Drainage, Sewer Maintenance Operations Center, to authorize the expenditure of $4,800, I'm sorry, $4,880,000 from the Sewer Operating Fund. The contracts will be used at the Sewer Maintenance Operations Center for materials, parts, and services to monitor, maintain, and repair equipment and to maintain the facility. Do my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance Zero Zero Seven Zero Dash 2023, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate current and pending universal term contract purchase agreements for the purchase of materials, supplies, and services for the Division of Power and authorize the expenditure of $5,340,000 from the Electricity Operating Fund. These purchases will be used by the Division of Power's Electrical Distribution System to serve new and existing customers, as well as replenish stock for maintenance of existing infrastructure. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, we have ordinance Zero Zero Seven One Dash 2023, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to establish a purchase order to make payments to Delaware County for sewer services provided during fiscal year 2023, and to authorize the expenditure of $3,500,000 from the Sewer Operating Sanitary Fund. This ordinance authorized the Director of Public Utilities to pay Delaware County for sewer service provisions during the fiscal year 2023, according to the terms of a 1991 agreement between the City of Columbus and Delaware County. This agreement permits discharge of sewage from Delaware County into sewer system of the City of Columbus and from the City of Columbus sewer system into Delaware County sewer system in order to avoid duplication of wastewater treatment. Do my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance Zero Zero Eight One Dash 2023, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to associate all general budget reservations resulting from this ordinance with the appropriate universal term contract purchase agreements for the purchase of materials, supplies, and services for the Division of Water and authorize the expenditure of $1,450,000 from the Water Operating Fund. The parts and materials and services from these contracts are used by the Division of Water Distribution Maintenance Section for maintenance of the water distribution systems and other related infrastructure. Do my colleagues have questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage by voice.
Second.
Thank you. Clerk, please call the row by voice.
Mr. Bangston.
Yes.
Ms. Barrosa de Padilla.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Ms. Favor.
Yes.
Mr. Remy.
Yes.
President Harden.
Abstain.
President Protem Dorance.
Yes. Thank you. The ordinance has passed. Next, we have ordinance Zero Zero Nine Five Dash 2023, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter into indefinite quantity agreement contracts with Ohio Malt Supply, Inc., for the Quasar Energy Group LLC, North Tree Farm for the Deep Row Hybrid Poplar Tree Farm Number Two Program, to authorize the expenditure of $1,840,000 from the Sanitary Sewer Operating Fund and to waive competitive bidding provisions of city code. The Division of Sewer and Drainage produces Class B biosalads at both Jackson Pike and Sully Wastewater Treatment Plants. The city is committed to 100% beneficial reuse of its biosalads. These biosalads are disposed by the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, approved Deep Row Hybrid Poplar Rapid Growth Tree Farm, where we're able to harvest poplar trees after just six to nine years. This improves soil and reduces runoff in the area. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And Council President, with your permission, I'd like to go back to our consent agenda on page eight for ordinance Zero Zero One Three Dash 2023 in the Utilities Committee. Move to amend ordinance Three Four Six Nine Dash 2022, to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to execute water and sewer agreements for the Rick and Backer Lockborn Service Area with the City of Columbus, Franklin County, Ohio, and the Village of Lockborn, and declare an emergency. At the request of the Department of Public Utilities, I move to postpone consideration of this ordinance until next week on February 13, 2023.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
It's bone.
Thank you, Council President. All I have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee coming for council is the Housing Committee, chaired by Councilmember Favor. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight in the Housing Committee, we have ordinance Zero Zero Three Four Dash 2023. This ordinance authorizes the appropriation and expenditure of up to $1.5 million of 2022 Home Investment Partnership Program, or otherwise known as Home Funds, from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Authorizes the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a commitment letter, loan agreement, promissory note, mortgage, and restrictive covenant with F.F. Preston Point LP in an amount up to $1.5 million for the Preston Point project and to declare an emergency. Preston Point is a proposed new construction development consisting of two three-story apartment buildings totaling 50 dwelling units on East Main Street in the near east side of Columbus. This development will offer much-needed affordable housing in the City of Columbus. Finance Fund is working with Home for Families to fill 10 units with households exiting homelessness. 20% of the units will be at or below 30% of the area median income or an annual income of under $30,000 for a family of four. An average rent will be under 60% of the area median income or an annual income of $56,000 for a family of four. The unit breakdown will be 17, one bed, one baths, 24, two bedrooms, one baths, and nine, three bedrooms, one and a half baths, totaling 50 units. In total, the city's funding for this project is $2 million, 1.5 million of home dollars, and $500,000 in bond funds. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? This is a very exciting project. Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance Two Thirty One Dash 2023, to amend the 2022 capital improvement budget, to authorize the city auditor to transfer funds within the Development taxable bond fund, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a contract with Jonathan Barnes Architecture and Design in support of architectural design services that will be used to aid in the accessory dwelling unit pilot program for Columbus residents, to authorize an appropriation and expenditure within the neighborhood initiative sub-fund, to authorize an expenditure from the Development taxable bond fund, to waive the competitive bidding provisions of Columbus city codes, and to declare an emergency. As Columbus continues to grow, there are real concerns that housing affordability and supply issues will be exasperated. $1 million was allocated out of the 2022 capital budget to support the ADU pilot program. This program will focus on the creation of accessory dwelling units on lots that currently house one single unit dwellings. Adding an accessory dwelling unit on these lots doubles the amount of housing units at a low cost to the primary landowner. ADUs provide an opportunity to increase the housing supply, provide financial stability for owners, and can be leveraged to increase affordable housing. ADUs have the opportunity to positively impact a number of Columbus residents, including aging residents looking to downsize but stay in their neighborhood, retirees on fixed incomes needing extra income to cover their mortgage, homeowners looking for real estate investments, young professionals without families, and people with disabilities that can have their own living space but still be close to family support. Additionally, there will be an affordability covenant on the ADU that will require the unit be rented as an affordable unit. This project will bring much-needed affordable housing stock to the City of Columbus. This is an initiative that I am excited to be working with Councilmember Remy and his office. Councilmember Remy, is there anything you'd like to add at this time?
No, this is just really exciting to get this going and have the opportunity to work with you, Chair Favor. This is going to be something long overdue, but to really help to promote an affordable way to provide affordable housing and to incentivize people that want to get in and offer this type of housing. It's going to be exciting to roll this out. So this is just the first part of, part of council's overall housing strategies this year, and it'll be a real joy to be able to bring this forward to the people. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Remy. Are there any additional questions or comments by my colleagues at this time? With that being said, I'd just like to give a shout out to an amazing person on our staff, Andrew Dyer. He's with our Legislative Research Office, as well as a member of my teams, and Deep Dejido, for all of your amazing work that you have done to help bring this project to reality. I remember my first year on council back in 2019. This was a concept that we floated with our John Glenn interns, and it's exciting to see it finally come to fruition. So with that, I just want to extend my appreciation to our council staff who works tirelessly along with my colleagues to bring some amazing legislation on behalf of all of our residents. So with that, I move for passage.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And finally, in the Housing Committee, we have ordinance Two Fifty Eight Dash 2023, to authorize the Director of the Department of Development to enter into a not-for-profit service contract with the Affordable Housing Trust for Columbus and Franklin County to facilitate the production of affordable housing and enhance homeownership opportunities in Columbus, to authorize the expenditure of 0.43% of the combined rates of 5.1% of the hotel motel short-term rental excise tax, and to declare an emergency. The Affordable Housing Trust for Columbus and Franklin County combines public and private funding through a variety of sources to support the development of housing within the city. Both rental units and homeownership projects are developed. These services require expertise that cannot be provided by existing city employees. In 2023, the city will commit its annual contribution of the hotel motel short-term rental tax receipts to the Housing Trust at an estimated $2,091,000 received through the portion of the hotel motel short-term rental excise tax that is allocated to the Housing Trust. The amount is based on 0.43% in relation to the 5.1% combined rate. Last year's allocation was $1,464,000, which is a difference of approximately $600,000, showing that the bed tax receipts are coming in higher than last year and are continuing, and we are continuing to rebound from COVID. Deputy Director Jennifer Finning is in the chair this evening. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
I'll just add, Chair Favor, Council President Harden, members of council, there was a great article in Columbus Business First just today that said visitors created $48.6 million in bed taxes in 2022, which was a 45% increase from 2021. And it gets us very close to our 2019 pre-pandemic high for the bed tax. We're just shy $1.1 million of that all-time high. So this is encouraging sign not only of the rebound of this important part of our economy, but of course, it means a greater contribution to the Affordable Housing Trust and its mission of creating affordable housing in our community.
Absolutely. Any additional questions or comments at this time? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. And with your permission, Council President, if we could go back to the consent portion of the agenda in the Health and Human Services Committee, and I will turn it over to Councilmember Barrosa de Padilla.
Thank you. So we are back on page 12 in Health and Human Services on the consent agenda. Ordinance Zero Four Four Nine, 2023, to authorize the city clerk to enter into a grant agreement with Dress for Success Columbus in support of organizational expansion and to authorize an appropriation and expenditure within the Neighborhood Initiative Sub-Fund and to declare an emergency. Dress for Success Columbus empowers women to achieve economic independence by providing a network of support, professional attire, and career development tools to help women thrive in work and in life. All programs include interview and employment suiting, career center, and professional women's group employment retention are free of charge for every woman they assist. This funding will allow an expansion of the Mobile Career Center, which will serve at least 500 women via Mobile Career Center appointments in 2023. Additionally, this funding will support expanded hours and targeted outreach in a se- Additionally, this funding will support expanded hours and targeted outreach in a second year of Level Summit, a one-day personal and professional development conference designed to build skilled leaders and equip women for long-term career success. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? I move to amend to 30-day by voice vote, please.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Bangston.
Abstain.
Ms. Barosa de Padilla.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Dorans.
Yes.
Ms. Favor.
Yes.
Mr. Remy.
Yes.
President Harden.
Yes.
Now, I'd like to waive second reading.
Second. Is there a second? Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Bangston.
Abstain.
Ms. Barosa de Padilla.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Dorans.
Yes.
Ms. Favor.
Yes.
Mr. Remy.
Yes.
President Harden.
Yes.
And now, I'd like to move for passage by voice.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Mr. Bangston.
Abstain.
Ms. Barosa de Padilla.
Yes.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Dorans.
Yes.
Ms. Favor.
Yes.
Mr. Remy.
Yes.
President Harden.
Yes. Ordinance is passed.
Thank you. I now give it back to Chair Favor.
Is there a motion to recess? Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy, President Harden.
We are in recess. We're ready to jump in. We will, as soon as Directors move, we'll go to zoning.
Seeing none, I first move to amend to emergency.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Amended.
Next, I move to move for passage as amended.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 0271-2023, to amend ordinance number 1038-2019, passed on April 29, 2019, for property located at 2441 Billings E. Road by repealing Sections 1 and 3 and replacing them with new Sections 1 and 3 to include legal descriptions of the specific property and to modify the limited text as pertains to the building design standards to replace the site plan. The applicant is 1948 Holdings LLC, care of Jeffrey Brown Attorney, proposed use as a ordinance amendment. The city's department recommendation is approval. Far Northwest Coalition's recommendation is also approval. Do my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I first move to amend as emergency.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Thank you. And now, I move for passage as amended.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Thank you. That is all we have in tonight's zoning committee.
Is there a motion? Seeing no further business coming from the zoning committee, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. We'll reconvene in two minutes. Can I get a motion to reconvene? Meeting number four. Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy, President Harden.
We are in meeting four. We are in the Public Safety Committee, and it's chaired by Councilmember Remy. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. Tonight, I have ordinance 118-2023, to authorize the Director of Public Safety to modify the existing contract with Change Healthcare Practice Management Solutions, Inc., for EMS billing, collection, and reporting services for the Division of Fire, to authorize the expenditure of 1.5 million from the general fund, and to declare an emergency. The city entered into a contract with Change Healthcare Practice Management Solutions via ordinance 3233-2018, passed December 6, 2018, for EMS billing, collection, patient care, reporting, hardware devices, accompanying extra equipment, third-party auditing, training, and two onsite dedicated personnel as needed for the Division of Fire's third-party EMS reimbursement program. Originally initiated at ordinance 118402, passed July 22, 2002. Public safety contracts, the services of Change Healthcare for the billing, collection, and reporting of those who are transported to hospitals by EMS personnel for emergency medical care. These billing, collection, and reporting services have generated a multitude of patient care information used by the Fire Division to better prepare EMS response protocols and in turn respond to citizens in a more effective manner. The Division also generates reports for various fire organizations that are cataloged nationwide. Revenue generated since inception of the program amounted to over $270 million at the end of December 2022 and is deposited in the city's general fund. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
That is all I have in the Public Safety Committee with your permission, Council President. Could I move on to environment? First, ordinance in Environment Committee is ordinance 323-2023, to authorize the Director of the Department of Public Service to enter into a contract with Nextstar Broadcasting, Inc., doing business as WCMH, for marketing campaign services for the Cleaner Columbus Initiative, to authorize an appropriation and transfer within the general fund, to authorize an expenditure within the general fund, to waive competitive bidding requirements of the Columbus City Code, and to declare an emergency. I'm very thankful to continue this partnership with NBC4 to help promote a Cleaner Columbus for All. We're very thankful for this partnership with the Division of Repuse and Keep Columbus Beautiful, and so this is an ongoing campaign to remind people that littering is bad and that we have always, that we have ways to volunteer to pick up litter and give back to our community. So as I mentioned earlier, the Second Annual Cleaner Columbus Citywide Cleanup will take place on April 1 with a kickoff at 9:00 a.m. at Wolf Park. Please come out and join Scarlett, the Litter Cardinal, and my colleagues as we invite all our residents and city employees, local businesses and organizations to help make Columbus a Cleaner Columbus. If you need further information, please go to cleanercolumbus.org or reach out to my legislative assistant, Lucy Frank, Legislative Aid, excuse me, lucyfrank@colombus.gov. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues this evening? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy, President Harden.
Pass.
Next, I have ordinance 340-2023, to authorize the city clerk to enter into a grant agreement with Northland Area Business Association in support of the 161 Task Forces 161 Corridor Beautification Project, to authorize an appropriation and expenditure within the project, within the Neighborhood Initiative Subfund, and to declare an emergency. Very excited to work with the 161 Task Forces. They continue to keep clean 3.1 miles along the business corridor. Very excited to see my colleague, Barosa de Padilla, Councilmember Barosa de Padilla, who also awarded a part of her program up there along 161 to do a 3D bus stop. Real excited to see what that turns out to be. But they have continually, over the years, helped to keep that area mowed, clean up trash, and beautify the corridor overall. Special thanks to Alice Fuller for her work in this regard, and so very excited to see how this is used to continue to beautify that corridor. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Bangston, Barosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorans, favor, Remy, President Harden. Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Passed.
And that is all I have in Environment Committee. With your permission, we'll move on to administration.
Please.
Next, I have ordinance 205, 2023, to authorize the Director of Human Resources Department to renew the contract with Mount Carmel Health Providers for testing services for the Division of Police and Fire for the provision of health and physical fitness programs, to authorize the expenditure of $1,154,948 from the general fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance represents the second of three one-year contract extensions approved in the original contract. This contract runs from March 1, 2023, to February 29, 2024. Every year, the contract renewal is subject to available appropriation and funding. It was last bid in September 2016. The committee unanimously recommended the contract be awarded to Mount Carmel Health Systems. Following an internal reorganization in late 2021, they subsequently changed their name to Mount Carmel Health Providers. The health and physical fitness program is part of the current collective bargaining agreements between the City of Columbus and Fraternal Order of Police, Capital City Lodge 9 in the City of Columbus, and the International Association of Firefighters Local 67. The intent of the program is to ensure the overall general health and fitness of police and police officers and firefighters. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next committee coming before council is Finance Committee. I chair the Finance Committee. First ordinance is 3567-2022, to authorize the Director of the Department of Finance and Management to enter into a nonprofit service contract with R.I.P. Medical Debt, to authorize the transfer of $2 million with the Recovery Fund, and to authorize the expenditure of up to $2 million from the Recovery Fund. This ordinance authorizes the Director of the Department of Finance and the Management to enter into a nonprofit service contract with R.I.P. Medical Debt, a national 501(c)(3) organization that acquires and relieves financially burdensome medical debt. The contract with R.I.P.M.D. will target medical debt for Columbus residents who earn less than 400% of the federal poverty level and whose medical debts comprise 5% or more of their annual income. Because R.I.P.M.D. can acquire debt for less than $1 per 100 of delinquent debt, its impact quickly adds up for families with delinquent medical debt. For example, $1 million in purchasing power could forgive $100 million in debt for Columbus residents. R.I.P.M.D. estimates that about 75,000 individuals would qualify for forgiveness under R.I.P.M.D.'s program. Based on average debt held by individuals with delinquent medical debt nationwide, R.I.P.M.D. estimates that Columbus residents would qualify for $180 million to $200 million in total debt forgiveness. We're excited about this ordinance. I want to thank again former President Pro Tem Elizabeth Brown for helping to introduce this ordinance and current President Pro Tem Rob Dorans for leading the charge to get this ordinance across the finish line. In order to make sure the contract is implemented effectively, we got an upcoming engagement with the hospital systems, so we'll postpone this ordinance until after that meeting and look forward to passing it later this month. Are there any questions or comments from my colleagues? I move to postpone consideration of ordinance 3567-2022 till February 27. Is there a second? Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Thank you. Ordinance is postponed. The next several ordinances relate to the 2023 operating budget. Council received the mayor's budget in November. In total, this budget is $2.3 billion with $1.163 billion in the general fund. We held six hearings to discuss the elements included in this budget, and this morning we held a press conference to announce council's amendments to the operating budget. We focused on three themes: safe and healthy neighborhoods, good jobs, and training, and affordable quality housing. I want to thank all of my colleagues for participating in this budget process. I certainly want to thank the Legislative Research Director, Matt Erickson, and all the staff who helped us get to the finish line. Council must amend the budget in a separate, distinct meeting prior to adopting the budget. We'll table these three budget ordinances tonight and pick them up next week. Before I read the titles, I ask for motions and ask for any motions. Are there any comments from my colleagues? Again, next week, we will really dive into this, and I think you'll probably even hear more about the amendments that council members put forward and their priorities for 2023. So let's get started. 2936-2022 is to make appropriations for the 12 months ending December 31, 2023, for each of the several object classes for which the City of Columbus has to provide from the monies known to be in the treasury of said city of Columbus and the fund known as the general fund during the said 12 months from the collection of all taxes and from the sources of revenue in the amount of $1,144 million and to declare an emergency. First, I move to amend as amended to the clerk. Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Now I move to postpone consideration until February 13 meeting. Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Thank you. Next, we have 2937-2022, to make appropriations and transfers for the 12 months ending December 31, 2023, for other funds for various divisions, to authorize the city auditor to make transfers as may be necessary and to declare an emergency. First, I move to amend as amended to the clerk. Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Reemy, President Harden.
And now I move to postpone consideration until February 13. Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next, we have ordinance 2938-2022, to make appropriations for 12 months ending December 31, 2023, for selected other funds for various divisions, to authorize the city auditor to make transfers as may be necessary and to declare an emergency. This ordinance is not being amended tonight. I move to postpone consideration until February 13. Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Thank you. We'll return to the budget ordinances next week. Next, we have ordinances 0189-2023, to authorize the Finance and Management Director on behalf of the Purchasing Office in the Fleet Management Division to modify an existing universal term contract and to establish purchase orders from previously established universal term contracts for the purchase of vehicles for use by the Division of Fire and the Division of Police with George Byers Sun, Inc., and the Reichert Properties, Inc., to authorize the expenditure of $605,386 from the ACPR 002421, to authorize the expenditure of $402,480 from ACPR 002422, to authorize the appropriation and expenditure of $5,976 from the Special Income Tax Fund and to declare an emergency. Past ordinances from 2021 to 2022 authorize more than $400,000 and $600,000 respectively for the acquisition of automobiles and light duty trucks for the Divisions of Fire and Police. Due to complications and unforeseen supply issues, these orders were not filled. This legislation combines those previously allocated funds and adds just under $6,000 to ensure the vehicles can be purchased. Are there any questions or comments on this ordinance? Seeing none, I move for passage. Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Passed. Next, I have ordinance 0190-2023, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to establish various purchase orders to automotive parts for the Fleet Management Division per the terms and conditions of various previously established universal term contracts, to authorize the expenditure of $5,700,000 from the Fleet Management Operation Fund and to declare an emergency. During the 2023, the Fleet Management Division is budgeted to spend $5,700,000 for parts to keep the city's fleet of approximately 6,000 vehicles in operation. Fleet management processes over 30,000 work orders annually for all of our city vehicles and equipments and requires purchase orders with over 400 vendors to help meet this need. This ordinance is contingent upon the passage of the 2023 operating budget. Are there any questions or comments? If not, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Next, we have 0193-2023, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to establish various purchase orders for fuel on behalf of the Fleet Management Division per the terms and conditions of previously established universal term contracts, to authorize the expenditure of $22,750,000 from the Fleet Management Operation Fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes an expenditure of $2,750,000 from the Fleet Management Operation Fund from previously established contracts for bulk unleaded ethanol diesel and biodiesel fuels. For 2023, the Fleet Management Division budgeted a total of $8,463,523 for unleaded and diesel fuels and fueling services across different vendors. This ordinance is also contingent upon the passage of the 2023 budget. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage. Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Next, we have ordinance 0194-2023, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to establish various purchase orders for fuel and fueling services on behalf of the Fleet Management Division per the terms and conditions of the various previously established universal term contracts and to authorize the expenditure of $3 million from the Fleet Management Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. Similar to the last ordinance, this legislation establishes purchase orders for fleet's fuel needs. This ordinance is also contingent upon the passage of the 2023 operating budget. Are there any comments or questions on this ordinance? Seeing none, I move for passage. Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Ordinance is passed. And I think finally, we have ordinance 0213-2023, to authorize the Finance and Management Director on behalf of Fleet Management Division to establish purchase orders from previously established universal term contracts for the purchase of vehicles for use of the Department of Public Safety Development Finance, Public Service, Recreation, and Parks with Byers Ford, Par Public Safety, and Reichert Properties, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to establish purchase orders from DAS cooperative contracts for the purchase of related vehicle upfitting, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to establish purchase orders for additional vehicles upfitting needs, which will be purchased in accordance with the competitive bidding provisions of the Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure, the appropriation and expenditure of $9 million from the Special Income Tax Fund and to declare an emergency. This ordinance authorizes the Finance and Management Director to establish purchase orders for the acquisition of new and used vehicles for various city departments. This contract also allows for the upfitting of existing vehicles. These vehicles are to be purchased as the replacement for older, higher mileage, high maintenance, and out-of-life cycle vehicles. New vehicles will be more fuel efficient and will relieve the city of maintenance expenses. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage. Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Next, I have ordinance 02... Please, passed. Thank you, guys. Next, I have 0284-2023, to appropriate and authorize the city auditor to transfer $5,707,425 from the Special Income Tax Fund to the Franklin County Convention Facilities Authority for the purchase of providing secondary funding in the event that Franklin County Convention Facilities Authority cannot meet its debt obligations and declare an emergency. Director, could you quickly tell us about this?
Excuse me. President Harden, President Pro Tem Dorans, members of council, sorry about that. Yes, this is just simply, the city will guarantee the debt for the Convention Facilities Authority. It's simply a backstop in the event that the Franklin County Convention Facilities Authority cannot do debt service for these particular bonds. It is simply a backstop. We do not anticipate that any dollars will be needed from the city. Happy to answer any other questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage. Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Passed. The final ordinance before council is ordinance 0286-2023, to authorize the city auditor to appropriate and expend up to $7,39,250 within the Special Income Tax Fund for reimbursement to the River South Authority, make lease payments, to authorize the city auditor on behalf of the Department of Public Service to expend up to $1,845,000 within the Mobility Enterprise Fund to the River South Authority to make lease payments and declare an emergency. Director, again, will you hit on this?
Yes, President Harden, President Pro Tem Dorans, members of council. There were various bonds that were issued for the renovation and purchase of the Lazarus Building, as well as bonds that were issued by River South for construction of the Cosi Garage. So this particular ordinance... Sorry, I'm having troubles with this mic. This particular ordinance basically establishes lease payments to River South for the debt service of those previously issued bonds. Happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions or comments for the Director? Seeing none, is there a move for passage? Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Passed. Seeing no further business coming for council, is there a motion to adjourn? Clerk please call the row.
Bangston, Burrosa de Padilla, Brown, Dorance, favor, Reemy, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. We have one non-agenda speaker, Mr. Nate Wilkins. Welcome back to council.